... 2022, we have approval of minutes for the board of directors by city clerk, for the business and presidential president, for public hearings, ordinances on secondary and one, an ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, Title X. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, Title VIII, first meeting. An ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, Title V. Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, Title X. Three, an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption. Resolution One, approved agenda amendments to the paywall, three, authorize three hundred per each tax sale certificates. Four, authorize tax collector, change federal plans on several tax and utility accounts. Five, for seven, or use of city property. Eight, and nine, a renewal of litter licenses, a special ruling. Ten, approved amendment of resolution R-Dex zero, number two, one, one, four, with majority of majority. Eleven, approved amendment of resolution R-Dex, number two, one, one, five, with DMRC architects. Twelve, approved amendment of resolution R-Dex zero, two, 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 three, six, with amendment, Scotland and Malin. Thirteen, approved resolution, authorize the city to use CTE funds. Fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, are refunds for utilities and tax. Seventeen, approved person-to-person grants or liquor license. Eighteen, and twenty, are use of city property. Twenty-one, approved resolutions to provide at least traffic control. Twenty-two, approved amendment of resolution R-Dex zero, eight, two, one, five, one, with wireless electronics. Twenty-three, approved award contract for truck equipment and replacement parts. Twenty-four, through thirty-one, are budget insertions for grant funding. Thirty-two, 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 thirty-six, are relaxation of city noise ordinance and use of city property. Thirty-seven, through forty-three, are release of former site guarantees and keys. Forty-four, approved warrant contract for base land and fuel. Forty-five, approved warrant contract for enterprise automation. Forty-six, approved warrant contract with Atlanta Comit. Forty-seven, approved warrant contract with underground utilities. Forty-eight, approved relaxation of city noise ordinance for lending and engineering. Forty-nine, approved resolution for acceptance of long-term tax exemption. Fifty, approved, uh, chapter number thirty-nine, budget insertion. Fifty-one, approved amendment of resolution R-Dex zero, seven, two, two, five, eight, with style and lecture. The meeting will now move forward. Please call the board.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Egan?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Here.
Council Vice President Estebar is absent. Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the local public meeting act have been complied with, satisfied, and any annual notice of the sufficient notice under time placed in comment of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick have been filed with the city clerk as a place inappropriate to board posted in the back best of the city hall visible to the public through the windows and lobby of city hall in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, named in the home of the city. Please stand before the president of the U.S.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing in a moment of silence to pray for all those around the world who are suffering, and for all those who protect us every day. Thank you.
Say.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Madam President, as the correspondent sent the rest of the committee department.
Yes, Madam President, the correspondent sent the committee office was forwarded to the appropriate departments for further action.
Thank you, and I will have a few updates this evening. Uh, first, any requests for information, including clearance rates, should be sought through email requests that may be directed. Another, the reported app was looked at immediately during the meeting last, last time, and over the past weeks, and there was never an issue through our website. If you continue to have a problem with the discharge for a parent, you may be able to have to do the process in case, um, you're doing something wrong on your end, or if something is not on your end, you know, we'll deal with that. We did investigate the concerns of cats being turned away, found no instance of such occurrence. And heard the, uh, roadwork NICSOL's alert spend communications. They do go out and use two different pieces of it. Emergency, uh, roadwork goes out through NICSOL, and any other scheduled work, roadwork is released through official city social media and on the website. Both of these instances are prompted by full road closure only. And then, um, the last thing, oh, someone was questioning if there was an instance when the city ran a sewer pipe from the street to the house. That does occur very, not often, but in a middle, you know, it will occur when the pipes coming from the house to the street are led and they have to be upgraded, so that is some kind of a situation where the city will look at those. Those are all my updates for this evening.
Um, Madam Council President, I would like to request a closed session with the council to discuss a personnel matter involving threatened litigation, and if the council would be so inclined to make a motion to go into closed session for purposes of discussing that issue, if you agree.
And a motion?
Motion. Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
And Madam Council President, for the benefit of council and the public, the minutes will reflect that council went into closed session to be briefed regarding personnel matters and threatened litigation against the city of New Brunswick. Information was discussed regarding the matters, regarding information that the city has pertaining to the matters and courses of action were discussed. So the minutes will so reflect that it's discussed in closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have no public hearings, ordinances for discussion on secondary. One, an ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, Title Twenty vehicles in traffic, chapter ten point two zero, handicap parking, section ten point two zero, point zero, one zero, section three nine, parking zones for handicapped persons, add two, one, five, Walden Street, six, eight, Main Street, six, four, Reservoir Avenue. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting after the public, we've got one time up, five minutes only for this ordinance only. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Next, an ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, Title Twenty vehicles in traffic, chapter ten point two zero, handicap parking, section ten point two zero, point zero, one zero, section three nine, parking zones for handicapped persons, add two, one, five, Walden Street, six, eight, Main Street, six, four, Reservoir Avenue. At this time, we're preparing to open the meeting after the public, we've got one time up, five minutes only for this ordinance only. Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Next, an ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, Title VIII, helping safety, chapter eight point four zero, solid waste collection disposal. Section eight point four zero, point one zero zero, enforcement of recycling. At this point, we're opening up the meeting to the public, one time up, five minutes only regarding this ordinance only, please state your name and address of the record.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moss, Somerset Street. Could you tell me, um, what is this, what connection to what it, what this is about? More detail, please.
Um, it's my understanding that this is applying enforcement and regulations regarding recycling, and it puts a, um, it allows the officers to enforce the laws, and it puts together a scale of offenses that go from one to four, starts at seventy-five for the first offense, and five hundred after fourth offense. And also, there's something that will be in there that for the first time, there's an issue, uh, with a homeowner or a business, and we'll receive a warning with instruction and all the proper documentation so that they understand exactly what is going on in the current meeting.
Well, I thank you for the full detail due to where I didn't mention this, mention this as well, due to where it's been, been going on for two years now, since the change, and I do not see these inspectors doing their job jobs when it comes to making sure everything is being properly with the recycling, due to where the first thing, like I said, we had all the residents buy the city, the recycle bins with no more clear bags. Please tell me why the residents still allow to put out clear bags and recycling trucks are still taking them, due to where I feel that these inspectors, they're ticketing who they want to.
Well, they should not be doing, they should not be putting out those bags to residents, and this is going to allow, we don't see a lot of changes to this ordinance, that's the hope of this, is to allow them to do that, because I, I believe the past couple of years, since we enacted new recycling rules, that we were not doing as much taking it. Is that correct, Mr. Lawrence?
Well, for sure, I don't mean to cut you off, but not to kill my time, I know for sure that wasn't true, due to where I kept on the record right before Madonna, before she retired from recycling, and I said, wow, funny, due to where, like I said, I set a good scam for you to have all the residents to buy their recycling bins, say no more clear bags. It's been two year, two and a half years now, you can say almost, due to where it should have been under, under control by now. Wow, you keep saying everything that's gonna be okay with this recycling company, wow, and we're still going through a hassle, due to we're made of stories all week, they can't pick up the recycling because the road is blocked off. If the garbage is being picked up, I don't see why the recycling is getting, not, not getting picked up, due to where, wow, you tell an older woman to put on a comment, Miss Erin, like, come on, no one can keep continuing to bring their recycling in and out every time they say, ooh, it's not gonna be picked up, bring it back in and bring it back out, and they get ticketed. I really think you need to get this under control with these inspectors, due to where this is becoming a very serious situation. I will say, luckily, I did see the, maybe we do have some good news with the recycling company, I did see them out there about six-thirty yesterday, making sure majority of it was picked up, due to where, like I say, I, you keep saying everything's gonna be okay, keep doing this, this has been going on for two or three years, but like I said, half of the pollution on the ground, what comes because this recycling company is doing a horrible job? And what, it's not that I, 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 believe me, you should know, we know now, I have plenty of videos, plenty of pictures, even though, due to where, what, half of them guys, what, they're drunk and all, due to why you show Mr. Valenti, what, had the, had the vehicle going down the wrong way with one-way street. I think you believe, after this contract runs out, I say you need to let this company go and go back to waste management where New Brunswick was a little cleaner, and like I said, please, please, I'm pretty sure Ruffin Village has done it the right way, but like I said, if you maintain, like I said, please, please, too much litter and it's coming from this recycling company, like I said, I have several pictures to prove it as well, thank you.
Well, we are taking steps to try to run through that situation, this does not contain to the company and our inspectors will be doing their job. Does anyone else wish to comment on this? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
First reading, ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general orders of the city in New Brunswick, section five, business licenses and regulations, chapter five point eight zero, rent control, add section five point eight zero, point two, one, five, displacement of tenants due to violations or uninhabitable.
Move the ordinance setting down September seventh, five P.M., same date we have the time.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Two, an ordinance to amend and supplement, if you advise general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, Title XV, vehicles in traffic, chapter ten point two zero, handicap parking, section ten point two zero, point zero, one zero, section three nine, parking zones for handicapped persons, add one, two, seven, Renton Avenue, ninety-five, South Ward Street.
Move the ordinance setting down September seventh, twenty twenty-two, at five P.M., same date we have the time.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Next, an ordinance to approve a long-term tax exemption, financial agreement between Jersey and New Brunswick Avenue, and the Urban Green LLC, for one hundred Jersey Avenue redevelopment project, block two, four, two, block one, two point oh six, three point oh two, five, ordinance.
Move the ordinance setting down September seventh, twenty twenty-two, at five P.M., same date we have the time.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Next, we have resolutions one through fifty-one, and we're going to ask the public at this point, please step forward, we have five minutes, one time up only, on the resolutions only.
Hi, yes, once again, Danielle Moss, Somerset Street. Uh, if you can tell me, give me, uh, what, thirteen, due to where I'm seeing, this is Somerset County, so what is New Brunswick happening, do this, if you can tell me, is the connection with?
It's, it's just an agreement with the Somerset County Polo, but we are purchasing , uh, three sets of collecting light signals through this program, and we will be using them at different areas around schools for safety with pedestrians and bicyclers.
So, okay, do you have a, is, maybe at the next meeting, I'm not gonna say it now, but maybe at the next meeting, if you can tell me the locations that these are gonna go to?
They, yeah, they will be looking and seeing them and just, you know, figure out what the best areas are for them, and we just have them, and have each other.
And I hope it's a little different from, due to where the situation with Joyce come around, and then the last time, flashing crosswalks were, were more, due to where they didn't last, last long, so I hope you do look into that, that it's a little better. Wait, please. Then, uh, far as thirty-three, uh, due to where it's regards to the roads being paved, I, I'm seeing, okay, uh, George Street, so is, uh, can you tell me, what is George Street gonna be, is all the tables gonna be removed from George Street for this project?
No, Ms. Morris, this is the intersection of George and New, this has, this is not in the area of the downtown George Street.
So, I, so the different address, the different location, due to I see George Street and New, and George Street from Main to, so, so that's not how it's going as I'm reading that down?
No, this, this has no, this is not downtown, this is, they're different areas.
Oh, okay. And then, uh, thirty-two, please? I, I'm seeing extra, I, I know I keep getting Swissware, due to where it's not city, it's the school property, but, and by intention, this extra work time with the school system, uh, with, with this one, that, that's based on the, the, the school, correct, when the traffic light for Jersey Avenue and Hell is gonna go off, or is that still under the Board of Education? Because the county said it's, you know, the county rules, they said it's not under them.
This is, Mr. Valenti?
This is for extra work, extra hours, correct?
But I don't believe this is for the traffic signal.
No, I'm, I'm just asking by intention, that included with this, due to where extra hours in doing the work for school.
This is realization of the city noise ordinance, it's a realization of the noise ordinance, it's not for any extra duty of this.
So, it, okay, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it alone. And then the last, last two, the connection, that's forty-seven and fifty, I understand that forty-seven is underground for a Sanford Street improvement, so, okay, if you can tell me what fifty, what type of improvements, uh, that will be? More signs, better curving, repaving, what, what would that be in detail, please?
Mr. Valenti, I'm gonna ask you if you some of this.
Specific to number fifty, that is, we were already awarded a grant from the DOT, so this is finances recognition of that grant, it's a budget insertion for it. We applied in, I believe, this twenty-twenty to the NJDOT Local Urban Aid Fund, and the project that we chose to submit to them was for Sanford Street improvements, of which then we were successfully awarded a grant, and then now six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That work, we approved, awarded the contract last meeting, so that's gonna start happening soon.
So, so both, basically, both of the, um, are for the water project?
No, the, both include some component of water.
Okay.
Sanford Street includes water, includes traffic signal upgrades, includes some selective sanitary sewer repair replacement, as well as concrete curbside water.
Got you, thank you, thank you.
Good afternoon, boroughs of New Brunswick today, I just wanted to ask, uh, number eight, with the approval of your license, can you explain to me a little bit more of what's the special ruling?
Ms. Allison, please, sure, Council President. So, for this special ruling, um, it is a, in, in approval that has to go through the Director of ABC for a license that has not been enacted over one license term. So this license is not being used at a premise, and it's enacted.
Okay, do you know how long it's been enacted for?
Since March of twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the resolutions only?
My question is, is your name and address?
Linda Storey, Hope Park, New York.
Thank you.
Um, the question is, number forty-nine, about the resolution for acceptance of long-term tax exemption, how does that relate to the ordinance? They seem to be the same thing.
I believe by statute, we have to give a resolution as well as the ordinance.
Okay, so if the ordinance is accepted, then it's not accepted until the resolution is, I mean, it's not enforced until?
No, the ordinance has to be accepted in order for it to be enforced.
And the resolution?
Well, that has to be accepted as well.
Oh, the resolution is to accept the?
The application for the long-term tax exemption.
Oh, so this is just accepting the application, it's not approving the application, the ordinance approves it.
Correct.
Got you. Okay, and I had a question about the quarter of a million dollars, um, for, uh, police when they're doing water main work? Um, maybe that's not the, I'm thinking at the tax care, since at this time, it's not B S N G, or if, you know, some private, uh, firm paying the money, maybe that's not the most effective use of highly trained police officers. I mean, you know, we trust people who aren't police officers to cross our children and direct traffic.
And by law, I believe, we have to have officers, we can't just have civilians out there crossing people in, in an area that might create danger to pedestrians and traffic.
Well, if you take a look at the site, you'll see that, that crossing guards are doing way more to protect people from danger than is happening at the water main site, just saying.
Does anyone else wish to speak on the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolution second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Council President Sephora Ludwig?
Yes.
Do any of the council members have anything they'd like to address this evening? I'm now opening it up to the public, we have one time up for five minutes only, and this is a comment period only, and your questions will not be answered this evening. Please step forward, state your name.
Hello, um, my name is Anne Swardoff, I'm on the environmental commission for New Brunswick, and, um, our mission is to, quote, uh, improve, enhance, preserve the environment for the benefit of current and future residents, and to promote environmental awareness by research, information, gathering, and public meetings, such as this one. And it's with that goal in mind that I'm here today. Um, the environmental commission has sent a letter to the city council asking you to adopt the resolution, opposing the construction of a new power plant in the P C B section of Woodbridge, and I wanted to spend a few minutes talking about, uh, that resolution and why we think it's important. Uh, the company, Competitive Power Ventures, CPV, currently operates a seven hundred and twenty-five megawatt gas-fired power plant at the site, which is less than five hundred miles from New Brunswick. They're applying to the state for approval to build a second plant adjacent to the first. The, this plant, in combination with the current plant, would become one of the state's largest climate polluters, emitting four point six million tons of greenhouse gases per year, according to their own documents. The effects of climate change are already upon us, with wildfires, drought, more frequent violent storms, record temperatures, and flooding, which are particularly critical to the residents of New Brunswick, that flooding part. In order to preserve the environment for the benefit of current and future residents, we need to change our behavior and reduce rather than increase the use of fossil fuels that produce greenhouse gases. Aside from contributing to the impacts of climate change, the plant would exacerbate current and future residents, the, uh, for current and future residents, the risk and incidence of heart disease, cancer, asthma, and other respiratory diseases, especially for vulnerable communities like children, pregnant women, and elderly. We will all be breathing dirty air. The plant permit will allow admissions of significant quantities of particulate matter, nitrogen oxides, as well as formaldehyde and ammonia, all of which are hazardous to human health. The particulates get deep into the lungs and are associated with increases in death rates, higher rates of lung cancer and heart attacks, the delayed growth in babies and children, to name a few. Children in particular are highly affected by this, this pollution as they breathe in higher amounts of, uh, air relative to their body weight than adults do. The particulate matter emitted by the plant will cause deficits in long-term function and growth rate of our children, of their lungs. Nitrogen oxide produces ozone, which aggravates asthma, an incurable disease suffered by over forty-nine thousand adults and eleven thousand children in Middlesex County, who are disproportionately located in more impoverished communities and communities of color. As before, the negative effects of the ozone pollution will grow mostly upon our children. In addition to these impacts, local residents do not need this plant or the power that we're generating. Middlesex County already has six power plants, which are major sources of, uh, pollutants in the state. The existing plants already produce more, more energy than is needed by local homes and businesses. Middlesex County is a net exporter of power, of electricity. And there are better, greener ways to add low-cost power, uh, locally and reduce costs for our local consumers, and one example is what is the, uh, landfill to solar redevelopment project in Bull Ridge. So why are we asking the council to, um, take action? Basically, there's a problem with the way the NJTEP reviews permits, which is one plant at a time, which obscures the cumulative effects of a number of plants in one location. Uh, the gap in regulatory oversight creates overburdened communities, of which New Brunswick already has several. The environmental justice movement is trying to change this, and there are laws on the books in New Jersey that are being hammered out to address it, but the reforms are not likely to be in place in time for the, this plant's review at the NJTEP. So we need to fight this locally. Similar efforts have been effected elsewhere in the state, such as, um, another large plant that was denied permit in Morgan Bergen. Um, a growing number of environmental commissions have made similar requests to their governing bodies, Sayerville, North Brunswick, Franklin, Harrah Island Park, and today, I'm asking the council to join Edison, Harrah Amboy, Highland Park, Franklin, and Hoboken, and the growing list of communities that are passing, uh, similar resolutions, asking the governor and the NJTEP to decline to grant permits for this power plant.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Allison Morris, we did receive the resolution, and we are looking at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moss, Somerset Street. I will say, thank you, Jesus, that I finally see that Amtrak train, Amtrak and New Jersey train, that took the time to finally put a gate over, uh, towards where you're putting a new school. I'm disappointed in all you council members, plus the mayor, and, uh, the, uh, traffic authority, due to where, wow, I told you, this should have happened a while ago, it's sad that, wow, it took at least three people to get killed here in New Brunswick by a train in order for this to happen? Come on, do, do I really think that you take anything serious, too, too many things seriously when it comes to safety? No, I do not, because it should have took three deaths. I would like to know, who's the next person under Mayor Cahill, if he has to take an emergency leave, who would to take over with the township? Then also, I know, uh, two months ago, two hundred thousand dollars was received through Middlesex County, uh, towards homelessness, and, like I said, I know we're just asking questions, I would like to know that New Brunswick received theirs, and how much did they receive out of this two hundred thousand dollars that came through Middlesex County? And also, I would like to get back to, due to where, like I said, I, I, too many, too many lives are being told in here, due to where, but all the pieces have fit, due to where I can say who my number one enemy is now, because all the pieces are coming together, due to where I didn't have any harassment through New Brunswick Police Department until you became president, and like I said, and it hit me when, wow, you got exported out the last meeting from Officer Jamal James, and I told you, wow, did you get Captain Miller arrayed, because what, you're scared, because that's what you were getting exported before out of, uh, planning board? Like I said, but wow, it was meant for me to see you out to dinner with Chuck O'Donnell, another enemy, after, after I was where the Lord led me, to, to where, wow, that was like my little hate group, and wow, the story comes up, ooh, I, I, you didn't have to put hate group, and wow, the story comes up, ooh, I, I, you didn't have to put my name in, oh, I misled, bad mouth about the Rattleton River, like I said. I see you, you, you're trying to attack me, lying on your side, and I'm threatening you even when it came down to go voting? May the Lord send you a, the, the message, just like you tried to send me a definition? Let him send a definition to you of what threats?
You are lying with your friends.
I, I, I'm not, I'm not threatening you, you, look at the dictionary.
Death with me, that's a fact.
Look at the dictionary, I said the Lord, not me. So, like I said, due to where, yes, where with, with you lying, saying that New Brunswick Police Department doesn't have a tracker on my phone following me, like I said, you will be punished for lying due to where they're right, and I have cameras set up everywhere to watch them between nine thirty-nine, call nine twenty-nine, and nine thirty-one, keep following, coming to places, harassing me, am I putting up the videos on Facebook? What, are you urinating in public? Well, whoever started the bull game, call, call to, whoever called to the gate prescription, not coming to every black person saying, ooh, we're getting some problem with someone urinating, like I said. Now that I see we have three racist supporters that are on the council, and like I said, believe me, each, all of you keep hating for me, wow, because it's surely not about, about what I do, am I the only one that goes against the police department, and I'm the only one to do videos? Wow, I'm the only black one, and believe me, I'm thanking the public of New Brunswick where you speak the damn truth about what's really going on around here. But like I said, no worry, due to where, yes, you gave me a, they gave me a ticket for saving a man's life, I swear to God, if I'm lying, you made a noise strike me down right now, I was not doing nothing but rescuing a man that on the ground that needed an ambulance? What a racist, believe me, and I will say in my prayers that those six officers will have their day. If you can't treat people equal, you don't deserve to be on this planet and do anything, even look at me anyway? Do I feel bad? No, I don't, I'm being blessed in many ways that I'm speaking the truth on, so believe me, I'm not the devil, I'm not ugly, but like I said, God don't like ugly, and we will see who the ones that be punished. And I say from here, even though whether it takes me to come to the meeting, Suzanne Secora, you will have your day through the Lord, and like I said, you will have the, to you respect what I do, I never did nothing wrong to you, may you have the worst luck in the world.
Back to her, please, Major, record, last two dollars of this more. I'll have the next speaker, please.
Um, hello, I'm, 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 and I, uh, first of all, want to speak out, uh, for the resolution against that, uh, power plant. Uh, everything, everything that was already said, I'm not going to repeat all the information, but it is horrifying. We heard even more than that, we went to the presentation of the, that the company did, um, and it's, uh, very shady company, by the way, also, but that being aside, we should be paying the price, like, we're lying to our pockets, this is a foreign-owned, private company using our county, which is already overburdened, it's an environmental justice issue, because we already have seven, we're making way more power than we need. Obviously, there's counties that have none that would like to use this power, or maybe they're going to send it overseas, who knows? But the point is, we need to breathe the air, we're going to suffer all the consequences, um, including the, you know, the health, the adverse health issues. Now, they did pay off Woodbridge, you know, the actual town of Woodbridge will get money, so I guess they can, uh, try and, you know, help all the people that get sick from the dirtier air, because every time you make the air dirtier, more people get sick and more people die. That's just the statistics. Um, so, you know, Woodbridge was happy to take the money, I guess, to help those people or whatever they're going to do with the money, but, but all the rest of us that have to breathe the air aren't getting any money. So, yeah, it would be great, in North Bergen, the way that worked is, they just got, while the state was reviewing it, the, the environmental protection people were reviewing it like they are now with this one, they got a lot of the surrounding towns to sign on against the power plant, and they were successful. That plant was not approved, so that would be pretty great. Um, also, as far as these, um, tax exemptions, and then, um, in lieu of, in lieu of affordable housing payments, so I saw an interesting article in the Ledger about, um, Newark, you know, has a similar situation where a developer, uh, didn't want to build the affordable part of the development, um, but they have the same, uh, you want to call it loophole or whatever, that they can pay, it used to be twenty-five thousand dollars per unit, but they just upped it in Newark to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars per unit. Why? It's not to punish the developers, it's because that's what it costs to build one unit of affordable housing. So, at that rate, they would be paying, um, twenty-five million, two hundred thousand, I'm just calculating it at twenty percent of seven hundred, I don't believe exactly, uh, exact, you know, how many exact units there are, but if twenty percent of it was going to be affordable, they would have had to pay over twenty-five million. Um, even just paying the twenty-five thousand, which was Newark's old, old, uh, rate of reimbursement, it would be three million, five hundred thousand. And how much are they actually going to pay? I believe it's under two million. One point something, I can't remember, anyway, it's not close. It's not even close to what, but, so, so what is that calculation based on? If we can't build the affordable units for that amount that they're paying, then, then what is the point? How many units are we actually going to build with the one point six billion dollars?
Yeah, she's only got some unit from the CO first.
Yeah, from the amount they pay, how many affordable units are planned to be built? If the, if the, um, the information from Newark is correct, it would only be a couple. Wouldn't be anything like twenty, wouldn't be a fraction of that, um, not even, and I can't imagine it's so much cheaper to build units here than it is in, in Newark. And I think their information is probably accurate, because their council signed off on a seven to zero on increasing the reimbursement, so, um, yes. And now I will take the rest of my time and just stick here from our loyal workers at the Department of Public Works.
I'll have the next speaker, please.
Alfred Richardson, Livingston Avenue. Um, most of the time when I come here, I'm pretty sure you guys have had a solution, so my goal is just to make sure that I show up and bring things to your attention, so they can be recorded, so hopefully we can get this with me writing the governor, and trying to get you guys, get the feds to come back down here and take care of this whole mess, but, um, yeah, so I don't want to really waste too much time. You guys, you guys already know you don't pay us enough money. Um, you've already heard some of the complaints with the recycling. You guys pay them two times more than you pay your own workers, just to figure the recycling for you to leave in the streets, and then we turn around, have to pick the recycling up, because whatever they don't take, you tell us to throw it in the trash, or you send us back out there to get it, but that's not, that's not even neither here nor there. Um, let's also talk about, oh, the disaster relief fund and has to pay, oh, you guys don't know where that money went. Um, let's also talk about the, the, you guys said there was no money in the budget or something like that. Well, where did the money come from to hire temps? I guess seasonal workers, you guys hired them the past two weeks to come work with us, some temps, and you guys said you didn't have any money. You're paying them the same hourly wage that we're being paid, the people that have put in the work prior to them, there's nothing against them, but they're, they're coming in as temps, making the same amount of money as we are, um, but I thought you guys didn't have any money in the budget. Um, let's also talk about where the money came from with the children. You guys had a summer program that you guys were boosting up, and you were paying them thirteen dollars an hour, and there were about sixteen children working four hours a day, that could have been money that you put towards your workers, or some sort of incentive pay or hazard pay that you guys could have paid us, in which we did not receive. Um, let's talk about the hostile work environment, uh, I hope you guys are going to be prepared for that lawsuit, um, you know, then we received these letters, you know, every worker got a letter today like this. So, in this letter, you're basically micromanaging us using time, benefit time that we've earned. So, of course, every job gives out sick days and vacation days, and you got, you know, we don't work in nice little offices and wear nice little clothes, and you just sit down in the air in just the heat in the wintertime, we work outside. So, you're basically telling me sixty-three of those days on top of the holidays, where we only get paid regular time, we don't get paid double overtime for the holiday, and if we're off that holiday and coming in a double day of garbage, we don't get paid for picking up two days worth of garbage underground, we only get paid for that particular day, and you're making it a requirement that we come in, else we'll be terminated, or we'll have some sort of disciplinary action, which is some sort of threat. We've earned this time, and you guys are frustrated, I guess, because you guys had to pick up some garbage, double day of garbage around July? I mean, you, you did it once, and now you're frustrated, we do this every day. You don't compensate us for anything, you don't give us at least cold water, we got a colored zone leaf fountain that our administrator put in there, like, we're supposed to be happy that we got a water fountain in a break room that's a hundred degrees, and you bought fans. We don't even deserve any kind of fresh circulation of air there, there's one way in, one way out, and there's no social distancing in there, everybody has to be crammed together, not to mention it used to be a storage room for mechanics, so we don't know what was spilled on the floor, or you did was wiping over it, the ceilings don't even have tiles, there's rats running in there, there's rats running in the bathroom, and you expect us to just deal with that? We also have to keep the bathroom door open, which is directly next to the break room, because there's no windows and no ventilation system in there. So, why don't we just eat while somebody takes a shit, and we're just supposed to deal with that? But once again, back to this letter that's creating a hostile work environment, you guys are instructing us to tell us that we are not to use our days, else we'll be retaliated against, that's what this is, a retaliation. You're saying that there's a requirement in this paperwork where we have five sanitation drivers on duty and ten workers, laborers, on the back at all times. We've been short-staffed up until the past two weeks, where you decided to hire temps. So, is this to accommodate you guys, to make you guys feel better, when you have to do the work that we've done, we've had to do? Because ever since I've been here, it's been short-staffed. So, why weren't we required to get more workers here to help us when we needed it? Oh, because you didn't want to, nobody wants to work here, because you're not paying enough? You talk about the bargaining system, well, we've attended one of those meetings, lots of those meetings, the union meetings, nothing gets done, all it is, is arguing and bullshit, because nothing gets done.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'll have the next speaker, please. Is there anyone else from the public which has to speak? Same.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Egan.
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Council President Secora.
Yes.